Awesome. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we do not have a flag, so we won't stand up for the pledge. We usually do it as a pledge, but if we don't have a flag here, this is my preamble to the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and bring the meeting to... Begin the meeting. Could you please go through Roca? Welcome to the Lawrence High School Board Meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. First in the meeting are the commissioners, Mike Blair, Mike Borreas.
Yes.
Ana Morales.
Yes.
And officials. Farid Ruiz, I have the director. Patrick Delaney, testing our fire department. And Lieutenant Siro. Welcome. And the meeting starts.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meetings from July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-fourth.
I'll second the...
Second the motion.
Commissioner Morales made a motion to approve the minutes for July twenty-fourth for meetings. Seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote? Minutes approved. Thank you very much.
We don't have any old business. Four tables matters. For new business, we have the Portuguese American Holy Ghost Fraternity. They're applying for a one-day alcohol license. Can you please state your name for the record and the reason for the application?
My name's Lucy Finelli. I would just need a one-day alcohol license with the license.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales, do you have questions?
No, I know about this. They do this every year. And I hope you will best of all again with your...
Thank you. Lieutenant Sorillo?
No questions.
Captain Delaney?
No questions.
Uh, Director Ruiz?
No question. May the motion be approved?
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Morales, made a motion to approve one day for license for the Portuguese American North Coast at four thirty-eight. Come on the streets. Seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passed. Congratulations.
Thank you. You guys...
You can press right. Morales picked up the license.
Okay. Oh, I don't know. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda, we have Blue Lounge. Um, we have A and B with a dangerous weapon. And we have a report. So for this process, I think what we'll do is, um, I'll hand over the mic to Lieutenant Sorillo to tell us a little bit about the happenings tonight evening. And then if I have any questions, I'll ask the questions. And we'll just go down the line. Cool? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna read a report written by Officer Smart, log number twenty-four hundred thirty-eight oh-one. Officer Smart died states on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. He was called back to the station in regards to assault battery, dangerous weapon passed. Upon arrival, I spoke to the victim, Gutierrez. She stated that last night she was at Blue Lounge at around forty-five hundred hours. It was around twelve o'clock, twelve point five. A fight where the female broke out. The fight was recorded by a patron. And she noticed them recording. The female fighting grabbed a glass bottle off the counter and threw it at the victim, causing a cut on her lip. I looked at the victim, and she does not... She does have a cut on her lip. Female suspect is a Spanish female, wearing a white shirt and black leggings. The victim and her friend, Cora, do not know who this person is and is a complete stranger to the victim. This morning, the victim and her friend posted a video of the suspect throwing an object at the victim on Instagram to see if anybody can identify who it is. The victim stated some of the suspects' relatives have asked them to take it down in order to pay them to settle the matter. The victim also fears one person reaching out on Instagram's profile is the suspect. Uh, the video of the suspect throwing the object was able to get a good still picture of the suspect. And that was forwarded for identification into E H Q to simply identify who the suspect was. That matter was forwarded to detectives before they follow up. I'm not sure where the processes from there now.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for... Are in terms of safety, are we... My question is, was... Is that it happened? Is that the... There was a bottle on a table? A glass bottle on a table?
It says it was...
It was a coconut juice bottle. Not a bottle, like a can.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
That's something they wanted to say. It was a juice.
Okay, thank you. Yeah?
Yeah, it says a bottle when you do it, but I'm waiting for a video follow-up. I'm gonna have some detectives.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Morales, do you have any questions?
Did you have security that night?
Yeah.
Did you do the job checking everything? Have a man or no?
He wasn't actually there. Fight was just kind of pushed me over there.
Real problem. Let me ask the questions. You answer the questions.
Sure.
You used a warrant at church. Everybody come in, okay? You didn't pee the... You didn't participate in doing the investigation, right? You left the cameras, right? I have a more question.
Captain Delaney?
Nothing to add.
Director Ruiz? Um, Commissioner Morales?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. And we just... Forget about it. If it doesn't, we'll see any violation. I don't have time to... Okay?
Right. And, um... I think that when my colleague says, "Forget about it", I don't think that's the wording that he wants to use. I think what he really means is that the safety of our patrons, especially the folks that are going to your establishment, is extremely important to us. That is why we have these meetings. And we take time to do these proceedings to make sure that you are up to date, that you're keeping people safe, and that you're doing well. You're campaigning for your business to thrive and so people can come and have a good time, et cetera. I really do not, under any circumstances, want any of the business owners coming before us because we have violent things happening in the community. I trust what is written in the report to be true because it's the only thing I can go on. Um, and because this is essentially your first offense since, I mean, in this period, we want to make sure that you know that it does matter to us. So we're not saying, "Forget about it". We don't want you to come back again with another issue.
What I meant was, forget about it means no violation. Absolutely. Because the... In quotes, if you had to use squash diet, then you did it very right.
Um, and Linoz, if you need any support? And what you do for a living is not easy, so I hope you can thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have to make a motion on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Should we make a motion on this? That's not a motion we need to make. Yeah. Okay.
So I'm seeing him. Oh, she's representing the business. Oh, yeah. You can go. Farid Ruiz, time. You can put it this way.
Okay. I understand what's happening. The next item on the agenda, we have...
Fara Restaurant.
Fara Restaurant? Is that anybody here from Fara Restaurant? You're from jewelry?
Oh, yes.
Okay. What we'll do is, um, let's table this matter towards the end of the meeting. I'll make a motion to, um, move item number two to...
To the end.
Item twelve.
Number three.
Item number three. Can you second that, Mike?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morales made a motion to move item number two to the end of the meeting. Seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Item number three is now... I don't know, but it's happening.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have Xavier's Place with an A and B with dangerous weapon. And similarly to how we just said the first one, um, I am going to pass the mic to Lieutenant Sorillo. And then if we have any questions, we'll have a conversation and go down the line. Thank you. Lieutenant Sorillo?
Yeah. I read from the report written by Officer Tredo. Report number twenty-four hundred thirty-four eighty-four. He stays on Monday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-four. Officer Tredo was assigned to uniform patrol cruiser four twenty-five at approximately one seventeen A M. He was dispatched to the area of Xavier's at two forty-five Lawrence Street for a well-being check. The caller stated there was a fight and they needed help. Upon arrival, he spoke to two males and a worker of the nightclub who stated there was a fight. However, the fight ended and everyone left. At this time, there was no disturbance and the scene was clear. Approximately twenty minutes later, the officer, Officer Tredo, was dispatched to L G H, or a male who had been sustained and stabbed from Xavier's. Upon his arrival, he met with a male who was out and walking to a bed in the... The male victim, Iba, was seen holding his left leg as well as a... As tight his shots up, limping, as if he had got an injury to that left leg. I followed the victim and the nurse to his room. As the nurse was tending to the victim's stab wound, which could be seen on his mid-upper thigh area of his left leg. The nurse stated it appeared to be puncture wound. I asked the victim what occurred. He stated that he did not know. He should be... It should be noted that Samuel appeared to be under the influence of alcohol beverage. His speech was slurred. He also appeared to be unfazed of the fact that he had been just been stabbed. The victim stated the only thing he remembered was a crowd began rushing out of Xavier's and a fight ensued just outside the doorway. He stated he was not involved in the fight. And at that point, he looked down after being bumped into the large crowd caused by the fight and realized that he had been stabbed. At this time, he began to yell for help and calling. I informed the victim if he recalled anything from the incident to contact the Lawrence Police for further information. I returned to Xavier's, canvassed the area for possible weapons, blood at the scene, but was unsuccessful. I will be followed up with detectives on this investigation. That is the report. I just want to note that we've never received any calls from Xavier's regarding the fight. Although that isn't your call we received was checked along the way.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales, do you have any questions?
I want to hear from the attorney first, please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Brian Carden, um, on behalf of Xavier's Place, with the people tonight, is the owner, Louis Igal. The Commission is obviously very familiar with Xavier's Place. Mr. Igal's been in business a long time. Uh, he runs a very active establishment. And from time to time, things happen there. I've been before this Commission on incidents before. Um, and I know that there's been some incidents recently this year that have resulted in some punishment. Um, this one here, I think, uh, as I think the Commission is well aware, um, you know, we operate here, it's like a court of law. You have to have evidence. I mean, it's gotta be able to stand up. It's, you know, the A B C C requires evidence to be presented and cases to be proved. Courts require that. Um, what you have here is the statement of a drunk guy who doesn't know what happened, um, doesn't know where he got stabbed, when he got stabbed, what he got stabbed with, whether it was inside of Xavier's, outside of Xavier's. Um, you know, Mr. Igal has a full security staff, um, multiple guys who pays good money for good security. It appears that there was an incident at the time of closing that they broke up and they effectively contained. And then all of a sudden, now this guy is showing up at the Lawrence General Hospital, doesn't remember what happened, but appears to have been suffered some sort of an injury. So I don't know what to say, Commissioners, but I know that, um, I understand the concept of progressive discipline, but this is just not one of those incidents that I think Mr. Igal should have to be penalized for. Uh, I don't know what he did wrong here. There have been incidents over the last couple of years where people have been shot just outside of establishments. And because they were on the street instead of in the parking lot, there's nothing that can be done. So we don't know what happened here. How can we hold Mr. Igal responsible when we don't know what happened?
Are you all set now?
I'm done.
Let me put it this way, Counselor. When I read the report and I see the report says, "People rushed out of the bar. There's a fight inside the bar." Okay? That plainly stipulated a fight in the bar. You've had your counsel, your client here a couple of times, right? We talked about it last year. We told him we want to increase the occupancy. And I told him, "Then how are we gonna increase occupancy? If you can't control what you have, how?" And we're in the same position again. He's not taking care of his own. Yeah, the guy was drunk. Where did he get the drinks from? Inside the bar. Okay? So I'm not gonna say that. We just gave him a suspension last month. And you deserve it? Or did he feel it?
No, he deserved it.
Okay. So he got back on this again. So why don't we just do this? Something has to be done to straighten this up with this plan. We can't have the Lawrence Police probably go there every Friday, Saturday night. When I was watching it last year, we had fourteen different calls to his place for fights outside his place. Don't mean fights either started inside or just as they come out. So I'll hand over to everybody else and then I'll make my decision.
I want to just say this one thing, Mr. Lyrd, is that Mr. Igal, you know, he would love to have... He would love to be able to pay for a detail at the close of this business, but there's nothing available. Nope. He can't find anyone to take a detail.
You know why?
I don't know why.
I'll tell you why. It's too dangerous now.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
When I was a police officer, I worked every detail I could in the club, and I enjoyed it, okay? Guys don't want that. They don't want to go home beating up a black guy, everything else. When I did it, it was bottles and everything else.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Um, and in terms of your security team, has you done anything different with the team that you have in terms of adding folks or change the way you're operating?
Isn't... Can you ask him the same?
Yes, I definitely can. Um, con tu equipo de seguridad, esto se quería... Quería que me entendés. Eh, con tu equipo de seguridad, usted ha hecho algo diferente? Ha cambiado el equipo? Tiene más entrenamiento? ¿Cuál ha sido su proceso? Porque ya tenemos... Esto sería ya la tercera vez en un poco tiempo que usted está aquí. ¿Entiende?
Bueno, tengo más seguridad.
Tiene más seguridad.
Más seguridad. Para... Tiene más seguridad.
So he's adding more security, he says, um...
¿Qué se está pasando aquí? ¿Qué pasa aquí? A veces son cosas que a veces se le va desgastando a uno. Uno cree que es lo mejor.
Yeah. He's saying he's trying his best and sometimes things just get out of hand. And he has a team that's working on it.
Uno de los problemas ocurre fuera del negocio.
And a lot of his issues, he's saying, is happening outside of his business.
Ya, y lo que... Lo que debería poder una parte fuera, que la habrán cerrado. En todos los... Si llega de lo que ahí, mira que... Yo la entiendo. Si no cae un par de ellos fuera, no se queda tanto bueno.
Um, he says that he'd like there to be a detail or have like a police cruiser in the area, but when the police come to the area, they don't necessarily stay until it's like this part or the night is ending, he would like.
We'd love to do that. At every... At every, uh, clock and six.
Él dice que le gustaría hacer eso todos los locales de la ciudad. Um, I don't have additional questions. No tengo más preguntas. Lieutenant Sorillo, do you have any questions? Yeah, if there's any more questions.
No questions.
I'm gonna make a recommendation. I give a warning. But I swear, if he comes in front of this board again in six months, it's gonna be a ten-day suspension of a board. Yeah, I understand. He will go back to his house three months. I promise you that.
Bueno. Le vamos a dar una recomendación. Le vamos a dar, eh, un... Warning verbal ahora. Porque ya nosotros pedimos la última vez que vino cinco días de suspensión. Pero si regresa otra vez sería algo más, eh...
Twenty-four days of suspension.
Puede ser diez días de suspensión.
Este mes se acuerda la hora. Ah, adelantada, como se me...
Okay.
Do we understand each other?
Que si no entendemos, dice.
I'll make that a motion. And we just give a verbal warning. It's done.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Morales, made a motion to give Xavier a verbal warning. Seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we have Attica nightclub. We also have an A and B with a dangerous weapon.
I'm gonna ask for the... Come on. You're gonna ask for the police to review the report. Just do about the hours, okay? That's everything we're gonna hand over to court.
Ah. So...
We're talking about...
Okay.
So the reports that you have has already been redacted, but I'm gonna just... I'm just gonna skip over to the Commission to just hit the areas that, uh, the volume is for, okay? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna read from the report written on, uh, report number twenty-four hundred four zero seven nine. On Sunday, July seventh, twenty-twenty-four, Officer Rodriguez, Sergeant Salak, and Officer Gary were dispatched to One Mill Street, Attica nightclub at four eleven A M. The officers had trouble getting into the business. We called Fire Department for assistance with getting in. Let it be known that One Mill Street is a nightclub. Attica, whose hours of operation do not exceed one A M on Saturday nights. Uh, like I said, upon arrival, the officers found locked doors. They contacted dispatch to request fire to give assistance at their building. Shortly after that, this was able to make contact with somebody and make contact with the building. Uh, the reporting party reported that they were invited to Attica for an after-hours party by the owner. And... Video surveillance that was taken from the location showed in the area of nine to ten people in the establishment, uh, after hours. We did ask for, I believe, they've asked for an employee's list. It wasn't provided. I guess some of the people that were there supposedly were employees. Uh, I have not received any employee list. I'm not sure if the board has yet either. And kind of that's just the summary, the general summary of what occurred.
Thank you. Commissioner Morales, do you have questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. You know, you're not supposed to be in the club after quarter three, right? Two fifteen, every customer's supposed to yell. Quarter three, all your... Everybody's supposed to yell. You, your crew, your cleaning crew, everybody. You understand that? Right? Don't know why you were there at that time. This is your third offense, but the first two were, uh, three were warnings or something has to happen to you, okay? You could be there and you never know what's gonna happen like in this case, right? So I'm just gonna wait till everybody gets done speaking and I'll write a paper of recommendation, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Morales. Lieutenant Sorillo, do you have any questions? Captain Delaney?
Nothing to add.
I'm gonna make the motion. We should hit you with a two-day suspension.
Was this the first time we have issues with this establishment being open after hours?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Just a... It's a little bit of misunderstanding. Uh, wasn't open. I swear it's a... I wasn't saying... I couldn't say...
Well, no matter what, you shouldn't have been there.
I understand that.
Just for...
Um, I'll amend it and I'll just... I'll do a one-day suspension. Um, but I'm... There just seems to be a lot of things happening. This is the third hearing that we have with this restaurant, nightclub. Similarly to the previous person that was here. We don't want to show you guys down. We want the community to be safe. We are also aware that we are having clear issues with policing because our brothers, sisters in blue don't want to keep putting themselves in harm's way. So detelling is not happening. It's a whole... A whole issue is happening in the community. And clubs are not shutting down. But you guys, like, just do the rules. Close when you have to close. Don't get people underage drinking, like, do what you gotta do. And then we don't have to keep...[1615.02] And then we don't have to keep, this is, yes, this is like, I'm laughing about it, but it's not funny. Cause it's a lot of young people in the community that are going to your establishment, so my motion is to suspend you guys for a day, close you guys down for a day.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morales, made a motion to give a one-day suspension to Attica nightclub.
You're open.
Second by Commissioner Lea. Commissioner Morales, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Lea, have you called? I think that is a one-day suspension, starting when?
I'll look right now, I guess I'll fly tonight, right? If you can't do it tonight, I'm gonna go to your client, so how about tomorrow night? Tomorrow night, three days suspension.
Tomorrow is, uh, it's going to be Thursday?
Yep.
Okay, Thursday, the August eighth is gonna be closed and the police will get a super price to see if you're there or not. Okay, motion passed. And then, Commissioner Lea, as soon as I finish the meeting, that you can have a letter, okay, just in case something happened, okay?
No.
Sorry about that, buddy.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have Tenares USA Sports, is applying for one-day wine and mock beverage and so forth.
Lieutenant Serrano?
Hello, how are you?
I try to be alright all the time.
Good. Um... Can you please tell me your name for the record and the reason for?
My name is Delvin Valentine, our president of, our president of Tenares USA Sports. We got a tournament every year here, for the million, ten thousand people once, and then we're gonna celebrate this year again, and the level of the weekend, the big tournament again, and so forth. So we, before we, uh, we're doing, uh, and this side of the park, uh, in Loyd, and we changed it right now because the situation last year, we agreed with, uh, Jay to move to the other side of South Lawrence, since a lot of people coming around here, the street is a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot tough for the sea, and then we understand that that side is more better. So I'm meeting a recommendation, Jay, maybe Park, can you help me with this?
See?
Thank you. Commissioner Lea, go ahead.
I have some problems with it, okay? Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm, I think you did a good job last year, I don't know, you have had complaints, and probably did the year before, my problem is where the location is. You're running a party, I think, over there on the weekend, which was Saturday and Sunday, right? Saturday and Sunday, there's basketball all the time over there with, at, at the courts, they have volleyball with the kids over there, right? And they're doing the park all over again.
It's not, Commissioner, it's not there.
It's not that far.
Well, not, yeah.
This is...
We're talking about South Lawrence East.
No, there is no basketball court outside, or...
That's, you're probably talking about... The what? The O'Connell.
Yeah.
O'Connell has a glass.
This is the South Lawrence East.
So this is behind, so you see the school in the back?
The corner, we, we're gonna use the corner just to play, the people, they're not gonna drink over there, they're still gonna play all the Saturday there.
Oh, this is, this is not on, uh, Iceberg Street, that's what I was told, on Iceberg Street.
They're gonna have, they're gonna, just for clarification, they're gonna have, they're gonna play softball at the O'Connell, there'll be no drinking there.
No, there's not, there are.
The drinking will be at the plate, at the, uh, South Lawrence East.
Because it's closed, they're gonna, they're gonna concentrate in that area, just in that area.
There is three-way baseball field.
In the back.
In the back, or, this is by the state pool there, in the back there, okay, okay, okay. All right.
And...
Where you gonna have the, uh, the liquor stand?
We got two choices, and then...
I don't have two choices, you have two.
I know, I know. I hope they have two choices, one of the sides is on the, you can see on the map over there, it's, when you went through, and the right side is a, is a, uh, long place over there, to put it there. Also, you can have the, the store, the, the, uh, providers, if we got that choice, it's gonna be better, because we don't have to open any car over there.
Okay, but I'm on these, you have to have a police detail. You have to have a police detail.
Yeah.
I can't agree to that, I agree to that.
Sorry. Also, we got, we got, uh, like, uh, security guys over there working around and taking care of that, nobody get out, nobody get through.
It's gonna have like four police officers.
Yeah.
Four police officers, no, we'll be down to the ballpark with the ball over or anything like that, there'll be no ball.
Last year we did, honestly, last year, well, you can say that, we, we, we covered with that, even we rent a place along the, and, uh, the corner there on the field.
Yeah, Miro, Miro and Salatora.
Yeah.
I remember that last year, I heard no complaints, I did, but at least when I was told this is South Lawrence East, meaning the corner, that's what, beautiful. Okay, I got a problem.
Lieutenant Serrano?
Nope, I'm working with the organizer, we should know that.
Thank you.
He's, he's, he's a...
I know. Captain, uh, Delaney?
Uh, no questions, wish you the best of luck.
Also, you can go over there and enjoy us, please, please.
Thank you. Doctor, please?
No, no questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either.
Make a motion with that.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Lea made a motion to approve one-day alcohol license for Tenares USA Sports, seconded by Commissioner Morales, Commissioner Lea, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, have you called? Motion passed. You can come by to pick up the license for the office. Anytime you want.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
See you.
The next item on the agenda, we have Joy Enpanadas, is that right? Why do I have? Hola, como estas? En inglés o en español? La tiene que ver a traducir, estamos haciendo. Um, can you please tell me your name and the reason for the application? Yeah, and I want to get the license to open up, uh, my business. Uh, I have a question, um, está cambiando de local, localización, are you changing locations? No? Okay. Commissioner Lea?
Uh, this is the corner of Broadway and Holly, or Broadway and Daisy, right?
Yes. Well, weren't they already functioning, is this like a new, a renewal?
They didn't, what happened with them, uh, we find out that after the pandemic, when you're doing, they didn't renew.
Okay.
So that's why I told them, and I invited them to apply, because they, they was operating without, they come with the license.
This is already in business now, right?
It is.
So, you need to get a license every year, apply for a license every year.
So todos los años, you have to secure your license to renew your license, you have to renew your license.
Claro. Que incluso que se está renovando ahora, o sacando tu licencia ahora, tienen que renovarla de nuevo antes del 31 de diciembre, porque si ves el 31 de diciembre, la que se te apruebe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Captain Delaney?
Good evening, we're going with the business, we help the applicant, once she opened up a while, I will shoot ones of the business.
Thank you.
Como usted ha realizado despacio de servicios, está seguro que antes del 31, nos dio antonio, que va a ir y saca full permit, no permit, y la mía es cometida.
Ah, okay.
Make a motion with that.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Lea made a motion to approve a common big license for Joy Enpanadas, uh, for twenty-seven to forty-five Broadway, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Lea, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, have you called?
Yes.
Motion passed. Congratulations, you also can come to pick up your license tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda, we have KFC Hamburgers and Vitos Catering, who supplies for a common big license?
They're not ready.
They're not ready, okay.
They didn't finish the, the, uh, the review, so we made that way. So I can do now.
So, um...
Table.
Table, okay, table the next, please, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item for our next meeting.
Second, Commissioner Morales made a motion to table KFC Hamburgers and Vitos Catering, seconded by Commissioner Lea. Commissioner Morales, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Lea, have you called?
Yes.
I'm going to table for the thanks, uh, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have Malaya's nightclub, who's applying for an increase, increase of club occupancy from three seventy-five to five hundred.
One, one, Commissioner Serrano, so, so Largo contacted me, he's seeking to increase, um, volume of people that enter his property at, um, Two Newbury Street. I did reach out to, uh, Ryan Melville, he was, he's the head investigator, uh, E B C C, cause I wasn't sure, you know, how to increase it, well, I don't know, we had to go to the state. He said that, first of all, if the fire department signs off on it, and if the building commission signs off on it, uh, and he doesn't make any alterations, and all, the club doesn't change anything. It's out of their jurisdiction, but it still falls on you to decide whether you wanna allow the increase, so we did research that, so the state's, uh, because my understanding is he's not, he's not making any alterations, changes in time, anything like that, other than he is seeking, based on the size of the place, to increase the capacity to a total of withstanding room, five hundred and ten people, and seating four hundred and eight. And that's up from, what's the total right now?
Three seventy-eight.
Three seventy-eight. He does have all the space in this particular club, and he has run it all, and some evenings have probably too many people convinced he wants to make sure he's doing it right, so we're asking for the consideration increasing the room.
And currently, the three seventy-eight is, um, standing, dancing?
Uh, it's standing, dancing.
Um, I don't have, uh, additional questions, Commissioner Lea, do you have questions?
I have a couple of questions, I'm gonna make a motion to table this, so that's me. I want to be able to go in there, look at it, because I can't say, one club, like Xavier, just went in there, and he had it, he had it in some of the people who wanted it. And when he shows the diagram, it looked like an empty hall, and we got there, the table, the pool tables, everything else, which doesn't work. He said the first time a club has come to us, we do it, so I want to be able to go in there, with the fire department, somebody, and have it inspected.
Sure.
And put you up for the next payment if we can, and if, if everything's okay, then we'll prove it.
Sure, it's okay, request. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want to sell some of it, or they come over?
We're waiting to get it done first, okay?
Thank you. Lieutenant Serrano, do you have any?
I don't have any questions.
Captain Delaney?
Uh, good evening, I've been working a little bit with Mr. Largo to, uh, on this a little bit, just have a couple of questions, for him with the architect, is, I'd like to be able to, uh, let the building commissioner, Peter Blanchett, just weigh in and make sure, it's, it's really just a mathematical formula, so it is, it is what it is, as long as everything's done right. One thing, like, I don't believe you to use the egress out of the kitchen as a mo, uh, means of, uh, you know, getting out as an, as a exit, and there's just these lines, they have to be, you know, thirty-two inches, and it has to be subtracted, so we just have to do the math, I'd like to give the building commissioner just a look it over, but again, it's, it's a mathematical formula, it really is what it is, as long as everything checks out and everything's good, fits, fits the criteria.
Thank you.
Uh, I bring one, and, you know, we spoke also, um, so, uh, so the occupancy of five hundred, that's without, you know, that's standing room only, right? So, and then, so we, what we're gonna need, and you spoke about it, we're gonna need occupancy for standing room only, tables and chairs, and then if you want, we'll have a map.
Yeah, I, I, I just sent it to you.
Oh, you just sent it to me, okay, I didn't see, I didn't see, okay, okay, all right, okay, all right, yeah, so. So, so you, you know, so you have to make sure, when, when you have your, the big parties, you know, there's no tables, you know, because it's standing room only. Yeah, you can have like a VIP section, but, you know, that all has to be calculated in there, and also, you know, that includes the band, you know, the occupancy includes the band, the, the employee includes everybody.
Yes, it includes, like I said, includes your waitresses, your bartenders, you, cleaning crew, your security, everybody gets included, I think. So, what I'm talking about is, when we get there, uh, like, I can't tell you what color it was, but we got there, and there was little tables, cocktail tables, all over the place, and that affects your occupancy. And that's why I wanna make sure we understand each other, and you have room to store this stuff, because if you store it someplace inside the place, it's taking room away, so that's what we have to look at. But I have no, no problem increasing it, after we take a look at it.
I just wanna make a, a point too, I, I did call Ralph Sacamoni, and he gave me the same answer that you got from Melville.
Yeah.
So before I second the motion, is it a consensus, it makes sense for us to check it out before, to make sure it's applicable?
Um, my end is all set, it just depends on you guys, where you wanna go.
In your end is all set?
Yeah.
As long as the map, the map checks out, it's, it's out of the building commissioner's book, seven eighty C M R, that's where the formula is, so he should check it over. And the fire department has an interest with the egresses, we're all for it, we just wanna check this math and make sure everything's...
Are you, are you gonna be around any time this weekend?
Yep, around all week.
About tomorrow?
Yep.
You be there?
Yep.
I can meet you there at a certain time tomorrow?
Anytime you want.
You tell us, that's good.
Not any time.
I don't want you to get in two weeks, you know?
Huh? What time you want me to be?
Not any time.
No, I'm asking you, cause I'm the other one, I'm gonna be, I'm up at seven o'clock, so I'm not, I'm not gonna ask these guys to be here.
Of course, pardon?
Huh?
Do?
Corner, corner.
Question to the applicant, to the chair?
Yeah.
Do you have any big events coming up this weekend, where you're looking for the increase?
Uh, this weekend, uh, no, no, not this weekend, no.
Okay.
On Sunday, I have like a little bit together.
No, I think you need the increase for then, maybe, um, suggestion, maybe we should let the building commissioner take a look at the mathematical formula first, and make sure everything checks out there.
What I'm trying to say is, I just wanna go in there, see what's there, and then let you guys share the map after that.
Sure, I'll be available tomorrow.
I just wanna see what you have there, so if I can come back on the twenty-first, if we approve it, and say, you have thirty-five tables, you have to store some places, I mean, you know, I wanna have the answers, okay? I, I'll be there at two o'clock.
Okay, sounds good.
I will second the motion to table this until our commissioner checks it out, and until the mathematical, what did he say?
Mathematical formula, uh, seven eighty C M R.
The mathematical formula adds up, like that.
Wait, for one thing, though, that day I won't be here.
What?
He can be here. Oh, you, you, yeah, okay. Where you gonna be? I'll do it on the phone, my mother's birthday, eighty years old.
He made it, I seconded it.
Commissioner Lea made a motion to table Malaya for the August twenty-first meeting, seconded by Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Lea, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales, have you called?
Yes.
You, you are table for the twenty-first.
You're paying him, right? Huh? You're paying him.
No, he's, he's, he's...
You're paying him, he can, he can be here on the twenty-first.
I'll be here. Already, I see you tomorrow, too.
Yep.
Okay, that's it. I'll see you guys.
Thank you.
Make sure it's clean.
I'm working on it.
The next item on the agenda, we have... That's what he says. Deli Moore. Hola, bueno, como estas?
Rosa, ¿te dele more? Aquí me mejura.
Ah, Rosa, eh, no puedes despedir la natación por, eh, la aplicación para la licencia.
Si, eh, queremos hacer un encuentro entre amigos, eh, de la graduación del, de fuego, de la graduación del los mil, nos queremos reunir.
We wanna have a high school graduation, uh, high school reunion, sorry, uh... Yeah?
Fourth Twenty-Fourth.
At Fourth Twenty, um, and Street. I don't have questions, Commissioner Lea?
That's, uh, to me, uh, Delia, what do you call that, but it's a real, uh...
The commissary, that kitchen?
Yeah, yeah, the one that used to belong to...
All of revolving doors, kitchen.
I have no problem with that, yeah.
Lieutenant Serrano?
No, no question.
Captain Delaney?
Uh, good evening, I believe this is her second license, um, one-day liquor license, we performed an inspection the first time, and everything was in order, and she, she has a nice face, so we'll approve that.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve this one-day alcohol license.
One second. Commissioner Morales made a motion to approve one-day alcohol license for Deli Moore, uh, Fourth Twenty-Fourth Street, seconded by Commissioner Lea, Commissioner Morales, have you called?
Yes.
Commissioner Lea, have you called?
Yes.
Motion passed. Congratulations.
Yes.
Me gustaría ver a Manuel Yercon, yeah?
I'll be busy, oh, you're buying your liquor.
Sí?
Que tienes comprar el licor de distribuir, distribuir.
Cuando te demos la licencia, tú puedes llamar distribuidor para que se la orden.
Ah, okay, gracias, hace económico.
No del licor.
No de licor, ah, okay.
Okay.
Gracias, gracias.
Y compra leche de baja para bebidas.
Leche de baja.
It's applying for one-day, order, order. Thank you. Gracias. The next item on the agenda, we have Bongo Ice Cream, I like that name, Bongo. Um, I hear that the inspection is still pending, is that right? I have a license, uh, tomorrow, do we have an inspection date?
Uh...
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Okay, cool. Um, tell us a little bit about your business.
I'm Miranda, I'm eighteen, I'll be going to...
You're doing great, I support you. You're going to high school?
I'm going to college, um, that's college, um, I'll be going to the university, so, I'll soon, um, I'll be studying pre-law, and I plan to open up an ice cream business, sell ice cream, if you want to make an ice cream, um, for machines, we'll be supplying it to the exit.
Very cool. Good, you did great, thank you. Lieutenant Serrano, do you have any?
I have no questions, good luck.
Captain Delaney?
It's a great spot, you're eight minutes from the firehouse right there, so, uh... It's a great spot, you're waiting at the firehouse right there, so, uh, and anything that you need from the fire department, let us know, we'll help you out, and we'll share the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, no questions, good luck.
Is this the one, washing dishes today?
Right behind.
With the, uh, insurance agent?
Yeah, insurance agent, yes.
I think he'll, they have my original, you know, they have.
I'll give you, I'll give you a copy, you'll tell her that, that coffee. So the only thing is waiting for is inspection, is that right?
Yeah, pending inspection, pending inspection.
When it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Once they pass inspection, then they will pick up the, the.
Yeah.
I'm very excited for you, one of the smartest things I ever did as a young person, when I was an emerging adult like your age, I bought a home, and it was a great investment, so I hope you keep this business, that it thrives, that it helps you build wealth, and that, you know, your speaking skills continue to improve as you go to law school, that's pretty incredible, are you gonna study pre-law, right? That's incredible.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Come on, where you represent all these people, come in here.
I want this one, too.
Yeah, go make that money. That's awesome. I'd like to make a motion to approve this, I'm very excited for you.
I'll second that, and good luck to you.
Yeah. Congrats to mom, mom?
Yeah.
Congrats.
Commissioner Morales made a motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, Commissioner Morales made a motion to approve, boom, 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 boom.
Boom.
Boom, boom. Ice cream and coffee, taken by Commissioner there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morales, have you approved?
Yes.
Commissioner there, have you approved?
Yep.
Motion passed, two zero. As soon you pass the inspection, when they want that inspection, you can come to the, you pick up the, your license.
Okay.
And if you wait for me, and so we finish, I can give you a copy, your copy back?
Oh, yes, I wanna wait, because I have nothing.
Okay, you can sit down, because we have more to finish.
Thank you, thank you.
You were.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The next item on the agenda, we amended, um, item number two or three.
Three.
Three, thank you. Uh, we have thought a restaurant, um, we have a pizza for this.
Yes.
Okay. Lieutenant Cerrolo?
Evening again, everyone, I'll read from here, center report number twenty-four hundred, volume seventy-five, uh, report was written, um, on July seventh, twenty twenty-four, while on patrol, I made, I would made aware from another officer that that restaurant was still open. At this time, uh, at this time, it was close to two A M on Saturday, the alcohol establishment required to stop serving alcohol at one A M. On arrival, I observed a group of at least twenty people outside of the business. I entered the building, and immediately saw, uh, open bottles of liquor, and people drinking in their bottles. I approached the bar, and asked the bartender, who the boss was, the bartender later identified, uh, Mr. Raymond, he said he was, I asked him why there were still people drinking in the bar. Raymond looked at his watch and said, it's only two o'clock. I informed Raymond that he should have closed one hour ago. Raymond respond, responded, I thought it was two o'clock. I then asked Raymond if he had his license to the business, he said yes, I then requested to see it, as we were waiting to see the license, other officers were telling people to put down their glasses, to leave. I walked outside to call in a license information on Raymond, and when I walked back in, people were still drinking from bottled beers, and walking out the back door, or walking out the door. I, I made Raymond aware of this, I was then approached by Robertson Pierre Leese, he was the owner, or the other one. He then proceeded, he then produced a liquor license in the, in the print, the printer on the license, or print on the license, and the hours of alcohol were served, Saturday from K D M to one A M. Uh, clearly, they were in violation of the service of alcohol. While speaking to both men, they first said it was okay, because they closed, they closed the doors, and didn't let anybody in after one A M, which leaves me to believe they are unaware of the time of alcohol service. Pierre also stated, there had been two classes for the license, then they asked for leniency, and if they would receive a warning, I responded, no, because this, this is a problem with businesses in the city, they're not following the rules, set forward by the license. Not only forward to Lieutenant Cerrolo, the license, and that ends the report.
Thank you, Lieutenant Cerrolo. Um, Commissioner there, do you have any questions?
No, I was just explaining why you were over.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, you feel comfortable speaking Spanish? Oh, sorry, I don't speak Spanish.
He speaks, um, Creole.
Creole, I shouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wish.
I'm so sorry, I was born on the other side of the island, my friends.
I know, I know.
Yes.
Yeah, cool.
Otherwise, we'd be like family, pretty much.
So, um, again, they, we had that, a, a, a birthday celebration, for one of our, for, in the family, so we did close at by one, but again, it's, it's a little bit tough, so when, when the officer stopped by, so he still saw the, the, you know, um, so, you know, open bottle, because at that time, we're not doing any, or selling any alcohol at all. But, and then that's why he said, hey, so we should close, you know, this, this should not supposed to have any bottle inside, and, and I said, okay, I understand that, but again, so we're not selling, and, and we're not giving any people alcohol, because, you know, we know the rules, we know, we don't want to be, you know, and I think that is the rules.
Okay, now, you know, your club closes at one o'clock, right?
Correct, on Saturday.
One fifteen, everybody's gonna be out.
Out, yeah.
Okay? By quarter to, all the bartender, the waitress, and everything, the place has to be empty. On Friday, it's two fifteen, and quarter to three, everybody has to go, you understand that now?
Yes, thanks.
So, it won't happen again in the future, right?
No.
We just had a club in the air a little while, and we suspended the place for a day.
And I don't want to be happy to.
Don't want to see that either, so I'm gonna wish you the best of luck on this, okay?
All right, thank you.
Um, this is the first year, so just don't let it happen again. One question, I didn't get a chance to pass the mic to Captain Delaney, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, Lieutenant, uh, Lieutenant Cerrolo, sorry about that.
No, I just want to make him aware, he's saying he called, he understands the rules, but the rules are, even though he's not serving alcohol, he has to understand that people, like the commissioner said, have to be out of the premises, you understand that, right? Sure, yeah. Doesn't mean it matters that you stop serving the alcohol, by those timeframes, on Friday, and then on Saturday, they have to off premises, family, relatives, it's not matters.
No, yes, there we go.
Okay.
Do your.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Did you get a copy of the rules and regulations?
Yes.
You did, so you know it's both there, everybody's supposed to be on a certain time, and everything?
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Doctor, please?
No, no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, and we just.
Oh, before, before you make the motion, can I mention something to the back, please?
Yes.
The, the patio extension?
Oh, yeah, okay, oh, that's the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the, the patio, right, we, no, they all set it up, but there's nothing there, are you gonna be, use the patio, or?
Yes, I don't know if you saw that, um, they contracted, just now, uh, bringing everything over, I don't know if you see their painting, and they put.
Oh, okay, okay, so you are doing something, okay, because if you weren't, then you'd have to remove it, because we don't want them just to stay there.
Yeah, we are just, I don't, I understand that, we don't want two using this space, and then, you know, cannot do anything.
All right, no, no problem, no problem, okay, thank you.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, just to, to a verbal warning, for this time.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Morales made a motion to give to Fara restaurant a verbal warning, taken by Commissioner there, Commissioner Morales, have you approved?
Yes.
Commissioner there, have you approved?
Yes.
Motion passed, verbal warning for Fara restaurant, for Fara's install. Thank you.
Have a good day, buddy.
You too, thanks.
Thank you. Huh? Oh, it's, um, I'd like to make a motion to, for German.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Morales made a motion to the general committee, taken by Commissioner there, Commissioner Morales, have you approved?
Yes.
Commissioner there, have you approved?
Yes.
May I, may I, thank you very much.
Thank you.